... I would like to be in the class and tell the order after the vote. The legislature members to raise their hands if they think that it is anti-council or if it's a job.
Flag your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain Dodd.
Your heavenly Father, thank you for this day and yet for life. Either we ask that you bless this meeting, or we do the work of the city. Bless those who participate and those who serve. Let our decisions, any decisions that we make, be well thought out, wise, fair and all. Just give us a travel of mercy on the way home. You say thank you, yes, to your name.
Amen. As it be said, welcome to those in attendance, and I would like to recognize that we do have a forum. Council Lawrence is absent, and everybody else is present tonight. And at this time, I would like to call Council Stroud. You have invited guests.
Hey, I'd like to recognize Mr. Matt Perry. He's with, I think, PAC 51, I'm sorry, my son. 251 for the Boy Scouts. Part of his requirement is that he has to come to a council meeting or a board of education, okay?
You chose well.
So I just wanted to mention.
Now, we heard you were going to give a speech. I'm just kidding.
This guy called him a full score. What?
Thank you for coming. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I'm not aware of any changes that need to be made, so is there a motion to approve? Motion by Council Hewitt, second by Council Stroud, and discussion of questions.
Okay. Wait a minute. There is something in the minutes about change.
All right. We're on the agenda right now.
Oh, our bill is...
We're getting there, though. All right. All in favor of approving the agenda? Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from May 17, 2021. Council meeting, is there motion to approve the motion? A motion by Council Goof, the second by Council Hewitt. Any additions, additions, corrections, or discussion?
All right. And when the motion I made about the speed bumps, I didn't mean speed bumps. I really meant the speed bump. I think that's what the people would want.
All right.
So I'd like to correct that. Bumps. Yeah, I have a question.
Yes. The height is a very good to your under character, to clarify. The bump cost is more damage than the hump. Hump is a more gradual. Bump is more profound.
Bump is probably what we need around the world.
So Mr. Dodd would like to correct that. We intended to say humps, but the question is that the person who's second didn't go on it and go with humps. So is that a material change in the motion, or is that just a change in the minutes? That's been my question.
Mr. Hewitt was on this.
Oh, I think I was. Okay.
I think we were okay with either one, as long as we did something to correct the issue.
We could put it either or.
All right. Any other corrections, additions, deletions, commentary, anything? Hearing none, I call the question to approve the minutes as amended. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of air piping and filter replacement projects. And we had a work session that began at 5:00 today with counsel where we discussed this with our city engineer and our water department director. And they recommended that we approve these two projects as emergency projects and go ahead and prove that they'd be able to do these. And these projects are included in the overall water and sewer upgrade that USDA is funding through grants and loans. And this would be a reimbursable expense, and it would not add to the total cost of the project, but this would come off as part of the cost, as I figured it. Did I state that well enough?
The emergency part, these two things are, as I understood, could fail tomorrow or could not fail over eighteen months. But they're so critical that we manage the water capacity and sewage treatment in case of the failure of either one of them. So that's the emergency part, something that can be reimbursed later, but needs to be done fairly quickly.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to prove first that this is an emergency, and secondly, that they go ahead with it and that we fund it from the competitive trust and the entire citizens who they interest in stuff?
So moved.
Motion by Council Stroud, second by Council Dodd. Any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor?
I'm abstaining. I was not here.
We have four votes in favor, none opposed, and one extension from Mr. Goof. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval to accept Juliette Christie Thaxton's resignation of chief municipal court judge. You should have a copy of her resignation package. She has received an appointment. The word for the governor, help me, it's all I have. American Samoa. Yeah, and she will be moving post haste in that direction. She's already moved. She's already moved, all right.
So moved.
She's already moved. I have a motion by Council Hewitt to accept her resignation. Is there a second? But I was just saying by Council Dodd, I think it'd be kind of hard to bring her back. Motion is second. Any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Do you have any idea what should we do in the government?
I think I heard, I'm not sure exactly what. It's a pretty good position, though.
A speaker's position in the government.
Yeah, and I'd like to say I've been with Christie for thirty years, and I'm sure a few times in the city court and wish her well. That's all I can say.
Well, we'll wish her well, too. Obviously, her service on the city court leads to bigger positions, so I'd say that. All right. The next. Yeah. All right. The next item on the agenda is appointment of Alyssa Peters as chief municipal court judge. Ms. Hall.
All right. You know, last year, we appointed Judge Peters to serve in the vacancy that was left when Vincent Ham was on. And she and Judge Lovelace have split the duties. The chief judge handles two courts, and then the assistant judge handles one court with Christie's resignation and Alyssa being the second in line. And my recommendation is that we move her up to chief judge at least for the remainder of the year, because that's a point that we do the first of the year each year in the organization meeting.
All right. Is there a motion? Motion by Council Hewitt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Stroud, any discussion? I will say, and I communicated this to Ms. Hall, that I was contacted about another candidate who was showing interest, and some of you may have been contacted about that candidate as well. So I just put that on the table, that there was some other interest in the position. And I told them at that time that we were not sure how we were going to proceed, and open it up. And maybe that's a discussion for we appoint Ms. Peters for the remainder of the year and then see if there's any interest at the beginning of the year. And I'm not saying that I don't want to appoint Ms. Peters. I just feel it's incumbent to tell you that somebody else communicated with me as well that they were interested.
I agree, it's a contact. I will contact. You know, it's like...
I had three people call me about one person that was interested.
About one person, yes. I will contact.
So what are you recommending? Are you recommending that Ms. Peters is exempt for the rest of the year? And then we look at both of them for the 2022?
I don't know that I've really recommended anything. I'm just saying that I want it to be on the table, but there is a difference.
That's how we do it. We appoint the court personnel in the organizational meeting in January every year.
So maybe knowing that...
And only one appointment, the annual one.
So maybe knowing that, and normally, we just reappoint, but maybe this year, since there was a vacancy in October or November, we allow people who are interested to survive them. I don't know. That's at the board's, that's at the council's discretion. I don't know that I'm pushing in one direction or another, just saying that they're, it's interesting, it's good to have people interested in serving in these positions.
I do have a question. This right here is a really dumb question, but I've only been to court one day in my life. What is the exact job description of the chief municipal court judge? What all do they have? Like, what is their role?
What all does it have as a chief?
Like, what is their role?
They oversee everything in the court. They pass down judgments. They accept recommendations from the solicitor and from the public defender. They hear all of the cases, but they do have the expression to have an assistant judge or what we refer to as the municipal judge. The solicitor does all of the background checks, looking at the record, making recommendations as to fines, jail time, and then the judge has the authority to either accept or reject their recommendation. They schedule the courts. They run the courts. The chief judge is the... The chief judge says, I have three other judges that are working for me. If for some reason, a lot of those judges cannot, the chief's job to either handle that court or get someone else to handle the court. They oversee and run the court and accept recommendations, and they pass down sentences.
Okay. I think what I'm really looking at as well, and I know we got a ways to go, I think that in December, January, the time frame, we're looking at this position again. Let's make sure that we know the people's records that we're going to nominate. Instead of arbitrarily nominating somebody, let's make sure that we do our own work and make sure that we nominate the best person out there who represents all people well. So that's why I kind of asked that, asked that point question, what is their exact job description? Loving that essence.
Yes. Um, if I'm wrong, the court divided up, is that correct? But types of offenses?
No, they have three courts per month. Two of them are partial appearances, where anybody that has a ticket that says they must appear, that they must come before the judge, and then anyone that flees not guilty, then they have hearings. They have a separate court for the hearings for those that flee not guilty. But all cases that are municipal court cases go to the court, and they assign those as the court fills up, and they change to the next court date, and they provide that date to the officer to debate on what date to put on the ticket. You could have anything from, do you have driving them suspended to a parking violation that would all be at the same court for a partial period?
I think one thing, y'all may have all read the Judge Thaxton's resignation letter, but I thought one thing stood out that I wanted to point out. She said, "I have enjoyed the cooperative, collaborative, and respectful working environment nurtured by all our stakeholders. When I hear other judges complain of issues maintaining separation of powers, I am proud that in precise each branch performs its role and allows the other branches to perform theirs." I think that's a testimony to our officials to stay out of the way and let them run it. So it's probably why we have some of these questions. We go through a team, and I've heard about other mayors who go and sit with the prosecutor or the solicitor at the table and make recommendations.
When you find yourself in trouble like that, when you're trying to tell a judge...
Oh, gosh, yeah.
And I had a police officer as well in certain instances. Did you find yourself in trouble?
Oh, they're...
Because they brought things like this, ladies. We didn't throw my case out because the mayor was sitting there, and these are all of them.
So we have a good system that I think works well, and I always tell people to process if they call in out of pocket, you know? You call the solicitor, and that's how you work through all processes. There's really, we have separation of powers, and that's a way to commit to offense. All right. We have a motion on the table. Any other discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor? All right. Motion is approved to appoint Alyssa Peters as the chief municipal court judge, and of course, the appointment will be held in January, if you... Next item on the agenda is appointment of Ashley Deadwild-Human as municipal court judge. You should have her resume in the package, Ms. Hall. Go ahead.
What I did when I found out that Judge Lovelace was leaving, I asked her and Judge Peters what recommendations that they may have for someone to fill the additional judgeship for the remainder of the year. This Deadwild-Human is one that Judge Peters strongly recommends. You'll see from her resume that she has been a judge with the City of Period Municipal Court for going on two years, and so she will bring experience. They do some different things at the City of Period in the municipal court. And I think she will bring a lot to the table and be able to get the court, not that it is off track by evening, but get it streamlined a little bit, and maybe we can move on with some things in the court. You'll see that she also founded the Georgia Justice Project, and that's something that you might look at, you know, several years ago, we looked at some projects that maybe the judges could incorporate in the municipal court. But my recommendation to you is that we appoint Ashley Deadwild-Human to fill the judgeship for the remainder of this year, and then, as you said, with the other judgeship, we look at that at the end of the year before the organizational meeting in January.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Council Hewitt, second by Council Stroud, and discussion of questions. Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of assurance of compliance requirements in non-entitled unit award terms and conditions documents relating to local fiscal recovery funds. I hope somebody will explain that.
Go ahead, Regina. This is part of the American Relief Act. You know, this was approved, and the funds were released early May. I want to say that the date was May 11. Cities that are less than $50,000 in population, they had to, we have to wait and receive our money from the state. The federal government is still in the process of writing those guidelines to what this money can exactly be spent on. One of the things that they have changed and added is that now it can be spent on stormwater projects, and that's one of the things that I was talking to the concept or between meetings about, the issues that we have with the storm款, but this building, they're already working on the specifications for that, but that may be a way that we can fund that project. But this is just another set of documents that the federal government and the state did require that we approve. The majority of the language that is in here, you'll read this, where it's talking about the civil rights requirements. We have these same requirements on all of the projects that we do for the funding, either from DCA, CDD, USDA. Any of those require all of the Civil Rights Acts to be followed, and we do follow those, but this one document does say that we agree that we will follow all of those protocols. But this is another document that we need, that we have to send in along with, I don't know how many others that Regina has already submitted, but this is the latest one, so we need approval. And if you will, in your motion, if you so desire to approve this, if you will also include that we are accepting the local fiscal recovery funds, so that we will have that in the record as well.
All right. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Councilman Howell, is there a second? Second by Council Hewitt, any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor? Hearing unanimously, so approved. I'm signing it now. All right. The next item on the agenda is approval of traffic calming policy procedures.
We previously had this before you, and this is the process we wrote this policy, the traffic calming. This is for the speed bumps, the speed bumps. There's a whole list of different things that you can use. You can use roundabouts, you can use four-way stops, whatever. When a problem is found, and then we do the speed study, the traffic study, that then we determine which of those should be used. We will work with the public works department, the city engineer. You will see in your packet, there is a flow chart of the traffic calming program. This just goes through. This is something easy to follow and say, okay, someone says they have a problem on my street. There's a process. They have to submit the letter. There has to be a certain number of the residents on that street to sign this. It is their responsibility to give this approved and get this submitted back. This says that we will do the speed study, that is why we have purchased the additional set of the solar speed signs, so that we can use those, those have the reports that go along with them, where it talks about the 85 percentile. Those reports that come back from those speed signs do show on there as to whether or not you have anyone, or you have the 85 percentile of those that are speeding more than 10 mile an hour of the speed limit. If you have that in that 85 percentile, then you would move forward with everything. So the point charges, just approved, shows how you do that. I'm just bringing this back for you again, so that we can have this approved. My concern was that since we went back and made the motion at the last meeting to do the speed bumps, or speed pumps, whichever it may be for each main street, that then we would not have the traffic calming policy to call back on to that time. This is on the agenda to be approved, so that we do have that policy moving forward.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
That's by Council Hewitt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Stroud, any discussion?
The only thing I, it seems like a lengthy process. You know, like the families that are here that are old, and I think it's an ongoing situation in the old city right now. And this is a lengthy process. I mean, that flow chart looks good. It's a good one. But it looks good, and it looks timely, but it's, in reality, it... I don't know. I'm just concerned by the idea of lengthy process, if people won't, will get discouraged, will get sat up with it and say, the heck with it. Being how it's going to happen.
I think it needs to be a combination, because I don't think it needs to be too late, but at the same time, it's...
Yeah, I agree.
If you just put speed bumps everywhere, then you put in lots of speed bumps without a reason necessary.
And that was the reason, in case it has to be, the drawing up a policy, so that we would have a policy, because at one time, we had roughly seven, eight different neighborhoods, and then there was one person in the neighborhood saying, I want a speed bump. And the question was as to whether or not if the person living in this street wanted a speed bump or something there in front of their street, and then the person next door says, I don't think there's a problem. That's why we wrote the policy, that's why it was brought up for you before. I don't know that it would be a lengthy process. The lengthy part of it is going to be the responsibility of the citizen to contact their neighbors and say, I need you to sign this so I can submit this to the court, so that we can get a speed bump to calm the traffic. Once that is done, all we have to do is move some of the signs around, and that was why we bought the second set of signs, so that we can have a sign running in both directions, and we can actually monitor two different areas at the same time.
If you don't have some kind of policy that comes suggested, then it's just us to say, hey, can we talk about some of that?
No, I don't think it would be a way to...
What happened in the neighborhood where you can't see the neighborhood and try to get the people who live there to buy into it, and they don't answer their door, they never answer their door? You know, at that point in time, like, what do you do? I mean, some neighborhoods, you could knock on the door, they... No, you could not, but ask the door. So how do you perceive about that? Because I saw 70%. So that's why I asked that question specifically, because we only get 60% of the people, and you know people, I don't, you just don't answer the door. So I would agree, is there an acceptance of the policy, or how do they do it?
I would think that if they submitted it to me, and they had 60% of the neighborhood that says we want a speed bump, then I would look at this and say, the next thing we're going to do is a traffic study. I may ask them, if, you know, did you send letters? Is there something that you can... Or maybe they'll sign a letter and say, I went to all of these, and I could not get anybody to the door. But even if the policy says that, I think it gives the city manager the leeway to say, okay, they tried, they got 60%, and then if we do a speed study, and it shows that there's not really an issue, then we do nothing.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I'm just, but to reemphasize, the council did vote to do something on this name, that is going to be the fault.
Definitely.
Does this have nothing to do with these names?
Nope.
Oh, that's right. And that is the reason why I brought this back, because a motion was made at the last meeting that went against the policy, and so that is the reason why I brings this back.
Not to belabor the point on this name, but do we have a five minutes where, have we voted, and how we voted?
I did not find that in the minutes.
Okay. All right. Any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions?
None.
No extensions. All right. We have four votes in favor, none opposed, and the motion passes and so through. Next item on the agenda is approval to remove restrictions for preserving city facilities. Ms. Hall.
About this time last year, we were talking about lessening the restrictions on city facilities. The discussion was about whether or not we could clean and sanitize those. I did some inquiries with cleaning companies. The cost was going to be costly, but with our costing of facilities plus pay, the person that's renting pays the full cost of the cleaning. And so we have not rented or moved any of our facilities since the shutdown in March of last year. It's my recommendation that we do go back to renting those facilities as we have previously. Speaking with chief partner today, City Park was used a lot this weekend. There was a church that had a van there, and there was literally no progress to park. It's blacked out and is getting a lot of use. Of course, that's not something that they have to reserve, with the pavilions that bug with the parks, along with the Kindert Building, American Legion Building, I think those buildings that we have to charge for, but it's my recommendation that we lift those restrictions, and that we go back to renting and preserving all these facilities.
Motion by Council Stroud, a second. Second by Council Hewitt. Any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval, street closure request of John Walton on June 26 and June 27. June twenty-sixth and June twenty-seven, two thousand forty-one, Ms. Hall.
He's still at Walton?
He said he was coming, he phoned me, he said, well, I keep wanting to shut up. What street is it?
I think he's going to do, I think it's going to be Street by County Park.
He mentioned Parsons.
Parsons Park.
Yeah.
Like that was what he's going.
All right.
Kids.
Yeah.
It's a son, it's a son, it won't get used again.
Yeah.
It'll be a little bit, yeah, like the beginning, the end, the end.
Something I'd like to say.
The other problem that I have with Mr. Walton is requesting is the stage, we did not need to use at that stage, we looked at it, and this did just, it does not need to be used.
I agree with you too.
Yes.
I would add that.
The bleachers from the rec department for the basketball court, those are not our bleachers, those are county bleachers, and what he has done previously is that he worked with the county to reserve, request those bleachers, and then he worked with them to get those lifted, that should not be something that everybody from the county rec department are, air bleachers are missing.
Do you see any, he's got a schedule for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, if we wait for the next meeting, it'd be too late, do you see any reason for us not to approve tonight, and if you run into any problems, always let the council know, and they'll be able to...
Since he has included in the package, you did have a separate packet there that is provided for you.
Oh, that's what, okay, I've been looking, I was still working in the book. Mr. Regina told me I had a separate packet, and I didn't realize this is one I need to look at.
He did not submit this until this happened, but if you approve it, if you approve the street closure, but I recommend that we do not provide the stage, and that we do not move the bleachers for him, that we can close the street, and we can, we should be able to put a electric panel, this is a proposal, there should be a place down there about the basketball court, we could put electricity down.
My motion to accept this would be with Genesis objections. Motion by Councilman Hewitt, is there a second?
No.
Second by Councilman Dodd, any special questions? I would just ask, do we know if the children have dragged yet, or have we got somebody to drag them?
I'm sure they did, two weeks ago, because there is a, there's some teams that play softball every Sunday.
Do we get any new bases?
I don't think we have bases.
And it probably will need to be dragged again, because if they've been playing on this, we'll have to be dragged.
Dragged again.
Yeah, dragged.
But if there's somebody that knows how to do that.
Yes, he did.
Yeah, very cool.
All right, we have motion, a second, any other discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carried unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the rest of the policy for administrative employees.
We previously had an administrative code, the rest code, that is currently on the works side, probably five, six years ago or so, and speaking with Regina and Joy coming on board and inexperienced human resources, they got together and wrote this rest code policy. I recommend that we adopt this rest code policy for all administrative staff, that includes all of those that are in administration role. In other words, this would be a rest code policy for all those that the city does not provide a human labor. And this is one Mr. Walton reviewed several years ago, and he had made some changes to it as well, so if it has been for his review, we can open it several years ago.
All right, is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, any discussion, second by, sorry, is there a second? There is a second by Councilman Hewitt, is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor of approving the rest code. Motion is approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the Georgia Department of Corrections' work details agreement.
Previously, we had a painful one, and it's too detailed, we were there over this time last year, the price increased to the forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighteen, and it was one detail only. We did have the benefit for several years to have two details, every cost of one dollar, for forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighteen, the cost of a dollar, that's under increase. We only had details in January and February of last year, they have not released the details out yet, they are hoping that with the new fiscal year, which starts July one, that they will be able to have the details back out, so I do recommend to you that we do approve this at a cost of forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars, and that is for one detail.
No. Second. Motion by Councilman Stroud, second by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved and signed. Next item on the agenda is approval of precise and distinctive, you know, point recommendation on a letter in our file, here recommending this with two shots of tail. Is it holding up the Royal Seven, and several other Spanishes? Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Councilman Dodd, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stroud, any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
All right, all right, motion carries, and we have so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of a street code and associate invoice.
This item on the agenda, and the next one, go hand in hand, you remember there's a bid out for survey and marking of the water fields, that has been completed as of last week, the survey is complete, we have a copy of the survey, a copy that we provided to this agreement, and they, last week, they completed the installation of all of the markers, and so this is the invoice, and this is the balance of what we owe Mr. Paulman. The total was eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars, we paid for the markers upfront, so that you can go ahead and order those, so the balance that we owe is the eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, and then the next part of it will be in the next motion, in the next agenda.
No.
Motion by Councilman Hewitt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stroud, any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor of approving the invoice. Motion carried unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of a budget adjustment for the cemetery department for the thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars, for the additional expenses related to one seventy-three, one hundred and seventy-three cemetery lots in Monroe Hills Memorial Gardens. Is there a motion to approve that budget adjustment? That directly relates to the previous item.
No.
If you motion by Councilman Stroud, is there a...
Everybody's watching, I feel like I'm doing all those motions.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Hewitt, is there a second? Too much? All right, motion and second, any discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval to start the random degree of process to the town lagging soil and water conservation district and natural resources conservation service. Ms. Hall, if you'll elaborate.
As you know, one of Chief Hardin's duties is to be the soil erosion review, monitors the soil erosion, and if we have the plans that need to be reviewed, he submits those to Marshall, Marshall reviews those, signs up on it, sends them back, they will no longer be doing, they haven't, and so Chief Hardin has already attended the class, and once he attends the class, then he has to, there is a process, that is about a two-year-long process for him to go through, so that he can view those and sign up on those, the balance having to go to Marshall, and the first part of this is that this letter needs to go to the natural resources conservation service in Marshall, telling them that we want to end the process for the memorial agreement, so that Chief Hardin can...
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Dodd, we got a new, a new watch coming in, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Mr. Walton, we've already addressed that approved your street closure.
Okay, you're, you're sorry to make it that slow.
That's all right. That's all right. All right, if there's anything you want to add, since you're here.
So what was said, I don't know.
A lot of glowing in the marks, and we just approved it.
Okay, okay.
I think there were some, there were some things that Ms. Hall brought out that needs to be addressed, so she can bring up, if you don't mind us.
Yes, the stage cannot be used, and we can't move the bleachers, you'll see, do like we normally do, have touch with the county.
Yeah, I figured I would, but I ain't working, right?
They have to have a representative.
Yeah, they changed it.
There's a county representative, right?
Yeah, because I think, I got all of them, we saved them, whoever else called me last time, and Debbie did come through and help me, and I think I used the bleachers from the recreation department to bring them, and, yeah, who would I speak to? Who was that?
The chairman, right, I'm right here.
How you doing?
Fat, sassy, I'm more, I'm more...
Can I say right here, buddy?
I'll text Lambie real fast, about a half.
All right, were there any other concerns, Ms. Hall? That's it, all right.
That's it. I do want to say I appreciate y'all for waiting on me, so y'all are doing all your past reviews, everything I got going on, y'all always will respond, show me those, especially with James, I know I get on my nerves most, but that's why I always call, talk to you.
We did.
Not that much, you're ready.
Thank you for caring about me.
Yeah, I just trying to show some love and inspire some people, I was inspired, you know, so you want to try to do the same thing.
Thanks, sir. All right. All right. Yeah, it's just for Parsons.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. I do get some of this stuff, okay. On Martin Luther King in Parsons, I was lying in that street block, and there's one more street that's right across the street from my grandmother's street, the street that goes down to Kindred Park, from Shark Street, it doesn't have any shore.
Yeah, it's a little shore.
Okay.
That just connects, so.
So who am I talking to to make that street named after me? Hey, hey, I have said, I have said for twenty years, for twenty years, I even told my grandmother, I said, one day, that street gonna be named after, and it doesn't have to be.
I still say I'm not...
It doesn't, and I know that, oh, Ben and James, Ben and James looked at it now, and we go over stuff, and I realized this little street hasn't ever had anything.
Would you like street bump, so?
It's nothing about.
Wait, you want to start, show it.
I think, I think we should name it John Walton, boom. Okay, appreciate y'all, bro.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, any other questions related to that? Ms. Hall, are we good? We're all good?
Get with me, and we'll get with Steve.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval to award the bid for the fire station concrete pad, the pads just enough in front of the fire station.
You have a copy of the bid tabulation sheet, I probably kind of hard to follow, because as they submitted the bids, their base bids were one amount, but then within their narrative that they included, they had lots of add-ons, and so I had the body department review these, they talked to, or Chief Hardin's talked to each one of the companies that submitted the bid, and our recommendation is that we will want the bid to J and J Remodeling, out of the site for a total bid of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and five dollars. They are about three hundred dollars more than the next, that's the actual lowest bid, but that company is out of Stone Mountain, and so since J and J Remodeling is a local firm, and they did come out, and they did make some recommendations for some different items that we could do, we would like to recommend that we use them at a bid of sixty-seven thousand three hundred and five.
Who is J and J?
Justin Hammond. Actually, I think I have no interest for like, I think he's actually having...
All right.
Maybe motion that would improve.
Second. Second. Motion by Councilman Stroud, second by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion of questions?
I'm always curious about why the disparity of prices, when you have a one hundred and eighteen thousand dollar one, all the way down to a six or seven thousand, it's almost twice the amount.
They don't want the word.
Say again?
Or if they don't, they don't, really don't want the word, or if they get, if they want, if they get the word, they're gonna make the change.
Yeah.
Most of them, they don't, they don't really want it.
But if you really want to pay us as much, we'll figure out a way.
It'd be worth our while, definitely.
Yeah.
Mr. Stroud, the difference there is, it is a hundred and ten, a hundred and eighteen thousand, whereas the others have a demolition cost of four to six thousand dollars, that company has a demolition cost of forty-four thousand dollars, why that forty-five thousand dollars, so that is the major difference.
One of these loans, they come back at the end, say they forgot to put a zero on the loan.
Yeah, that was.
The ten, so.
All right, we have a motion and second for approving J and J at sixty-seven thousand three hundred and five dollars, any other discussion of questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the joint, recall the meeting with Monroe County and City of Love on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to discuss the tees project, and we don't...
You should have received an email that I forwarded to you from Jim Hedges, that he will include breakfast, which will be served at seven thirty, eight p.m., and then the meeting will be called to order at eight, eight p.m., and the meeting will be held at the County Commission Center.
All right, Chairman Taffet, do you have anything to add?
Look forward to seeing y'all.
All right. All right, is there a motion to approve the call of the joint meeting?
No.
Motion by Councilman Dodd, is there a second?
No.
Second by Councilman Coolzby, I just, I hear you, you got a motion and a second, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. It's likely to be meeting on the eighteenth of June, at zero seven thirty, for breakfast, and then the meeting will begin at eight o'clock. Next item on the agenda is approval to reschedule for July twelve, two thousand twenty-one, council meeting, and that will fall at the time when we are having the national election, or if you go to Kenya, meeting.
Earlier this year, we changed the dates of all the meetings that coincided with holidays, and one of the motions that was made was that we all be on one meeting in July, and for that to be on July twelfth, and as Mayor Wilson just stated, you guys will be in Amelia Island during that time, so we will need to change that, the Monday before that is the holiday, and so then if you want to have it the following Monday, which would be July the nineteenth.
That would be our normal third Monday, third Monday.
That's good. I like to make the motion that we have our July meeting on July the nineteenth.
Second. Motion by Councilman Stroud, second by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion of questions related to rescheduling that meeting? Hearing none, I call the question, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, so approved. So we will only have one meeting in July, and that meeting will be on the nineteenth of July, at six p.m., in our new city council meeting. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of requisitions, are they satisfied? We finished the twenty-second of this one.
We're already being...
I'll be over there on the twenty-third, all right. All right. Next item, approval of acquisitions greater than five thousand dollars, of which I see four listed, one to head hitting the air for five thousand six hundred dollars, one to J and M Displaced for ten thousand dollars, one to Gresco Containment Supplies Inc. for eleven thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars, and one to Dubbed and Kendall and Company LLC with an amount of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty cents. Is there a motion for, for all of these invoices?
Play a motion, move, approve all.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, say it by Councilman Hewitt, any discussion or questions related to any of those invoices? Explanations on the, about the package?
Or the photos?
Not just.
The twenty was about a thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and four.
This is for electric lightways meeting. Uh, the company which, um, we will be using is Kendall and Company. They did receive the, uh, the bid from E C G. You'll see there that, um, Mike actually got some additional prices, and, um, Kendall is the one that bid. They will be here for six weeks. This actually equates out to, um, forty hours a week and six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents for six weeks, um, just to, to clear off our electric lightways that, um, haven't been done in several seasons.
All right. Will stick with your motion? All right. All right, motion and second, any discussion? Here, no more discussion, we'll call a question, all in favor. Motion by Attorney Madison, so approved. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Report, which is remarkably brief this, this time. Have you added to it? I didn't.
Brief.
All right, Ms. Hall, go for it.
Uh, just several things that are in the report that we sent to you. Um, the economic development bus tour will be August eighteenth and nineteenth. We do not have all of the information yet, but Electric City is putting that together. Uh, we will probably be the last stop on the first day. Uh, we're putting together as to where they will have, um, men available who will provide and, and their hotel rooms, which as far as by the U T. Uh, but we will have more information on that coming shortly. Uh, the other information, uh, we are in dire need, you know, I brought up company feedback about the trucks in the public works. We're losing things around, hoping that if we could, um, get by for a little while. Uh, Steve Butler and Steve Jones have both sent to me that, uh, they are in dire need of replacing those trucks. Uh, I would just like your authorization to just move forward and getting car prices to replace those trucks. We do need to, uh, purchase crew cab so that the, the, all four people, three to four people in a crew can all ride together in the truck. Um, and this is a budgeted, and even if we only replace four of the trucks, we're probably looking at about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Do you need a motion on that? I like to make a motion that we purchase the trucks for, for them, for those partners and needed.
The motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Councilman Dodd.
I saw Steve Jones' truck, it was, it was pretty bad. I saw it a few about last year. It was really pretty bad, so.
This is probably the best.
Really? Oh, wow.
Sure.
That's all, man. We will wait on it.
As we're, as we're upgrading the fleet, just a question I throw out, should, should we think about compressed natural gas or electric vehicles, those of which have gained popularity in the last seventy years? Just anytime you buy a new vehicle, do you think about those?
You know, and, and I think that's a wonderful idea, buy, like you said, compressed natural gas or the electric, knowing that anyone will recharge the electric, 'cause I'm one hundred percent for the electric.
The only problem is the trucks that we need, the trucks that, that Steve Butler has actually spec'd out, and they, they may have those in electric, I do not know, but if they spec'd out, all by all, crew cabs.
They make them.
So they have those.
F-150 rolled out a month ago, first decimal fifty, and, uh, in fact.
Over in a while.
They're having trouble getting it right. Enough of, of chips for the conventional trucks, you might be able to get an electric easier, but they have it shorted right now.
Thousand trucks, and they can't get chips, but chips on.
Yeah. And why is it because they're diverting Ford, diverting to the F-150 line, because that's where they need it.
I don't think so. I know your motion is that first you go ahead and purchase us, but we will, we will get pricing and bring that back.
It's just a thought.
I would say if we go to C and G, we need to talk with, uh, City or Phillips, or Phillips or Doug to deal down with Phillips. They, they, they have it right. I mean, that's who I was talking to last time I was here, that they did have it, and, you know, we want, that'd be something we want to talk to the county with.
Yes.
For location, um, you want to get everybody involved.
And they actually sell to the private sector and actually.
If you, if you hire someone, C and G and City, and you want, you not, you want to get everybody involved. Who loves to, uh, kind of be in the city here, and then, then you want to go so far as to say you want, uh, the waste management fee. So C and G.
Well, it's just certain things, you have three or four, you start compensating, it's pretty significant, not small fleet.
Who was the one to put a C and G location here? Wonder if somebody, couple, two, three years ago?
More than that, they're not even critical, they need a critical mass, they need to know that there's some government entities using part of that. Yeah, good point.
I could say you want a, just a regular F-150. I can't afford to replace what I have, this sort of.
No, no.
What's that about? I talked to somebody about replacing the truck I have, I can't afford it. Seven thousand dollars.
Pretty much my high blood pressure.
Hmm.
All right. All right, sorry to interrupt. Go ahead and talk. Uh, I thought you said we didn't.
I was shopping, but I didn't make a motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any discussion here, now, I'll call a question, all in favor. Motion is to proceed with buying, but I think what she's actually going to do, as good as regularly, is get the posters, and probably let us know before she comes, especially if it ends up being something fantastic, don't get priced, yeah. All right.
Uh, the other thing that is in the report that I want to make you aware of, uh, golf tournament for the tree board is this Friday. If you have not registered and you really want to play the golf tournament, you'll see Tammy tomorrow, there may still be room for you. Um, and Ms. Stroud, I sent you an email yesterday, uh, Saturday, Yvonne Stroud is having her, um, science camp this week. Uh, if you did not see the email, uh, when she went to set up for her camp at Kindlett's Community Building, uh, and Mr. Stroud came back to this, he sent several pictures to me, uh, that building was infested with, uh, some type of spiders. Uh, I had a colleague, Starmanator, he was gone out today and sprayed the inside of the building, the outside of the building, and the playground, um, and so we've offered this running to, to Ms. Stroud because we could previously approve of her to use the city building, and, uh, I think because of the known spiders and because they had to spray, that we go ahead and, and, uh, I've offered this to her for the rest of, of this week. She has a small group of, uh.
Preschool.
Preschool, and, and they have to have a parent with them, and so, um, just so that she can go ahead with her camp, just so you know, we've offered that to her. And there are, the only other thing that is, that is going the rest of the week is the apartment being able to melt away.
The proper cameras, y'all.
Yeah, what are cameras for?
No.
It's usually open, all right.
Infested is probably a lifetime.
Oh, yeah, it, it, it was bad. Like, soon as you walk in, you're walking right into spotters, like, ugh, it was, it, like, I don't have a right before we, like, stretch of imagination, but it was pretty nasty.
And there were a couple of spiders.
I, I smashed the spotter, and several would be spiders.
Ah.
It was, it was pretty nasty.
Uh, so the rest of my report is, um, as, as Mayor Wilson had alluded to, um, Mr. Garrison of the Palacano will be here at the next council meeting to not only review the status of the building, uh, but to also review the latest change order that he has submitted that does include, uh, an extension on the completion date of the building.
No, Joe.
Uh, if you guys would like to, uh, because every time before he has come, he has scheduled a walk-through of the building. If he would like to do that, we can schedule that for that Thursday, as we double call on the December twenty of June, uh, we'll walk through the building, and then he would come on, uh, that following Monday. Uh, the parts have arrived for the splash pad, and Chief Congressman is working with Carlos to get the day scheduled so that he can come for two days to install that new equipment. Uh, planning and zoning recommended the denial of the request for manual latch, uh, for variance to bring them home on the Graver Avenue. This matter will be advertised and will come before City Council for a public hearing. Uh, still need dates from everybody for the, uh, strategic planning retreat that you want to have with the Planning and Zoning Board. Uh, I will tell you that I did receive information this afternoon that the City County Retreat has been scheduled for June the twenty-fifth at the County Conference Center with breakfast starting at seven thirty, and the retreat beginning at eight A M and will run until three P M. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce is posting this, and they have requested an R S V P for all those that will be attending. If you did not receive that email, uh, you will let me know that, that you want the R S V P, you'll be attending, I will submit that. Um, but our, our time is running short on the meeting that you want to have, and have the, you know, you know, come with Electric City to facilitate for the strategic planning retreat with the City and Zoning.
Oh, for that being, I would like to do, I, I, because I was one of, one of the ones who said that this needed to be done, but, um, I would like to look at the county approach first, and then scale it back to, uh, what can we do from there? So anytime after June twenty-fifth, might be, um, is when we need to go with it. Um, I know July might be a wash because of all the things that, that we have going, but I'm not opposed to July either, but I definitely want to get this thing done before summer ends. I think it's only the right thing to do. Greg, Greg hit the nail on the head when he said that so much has happened, you know, and, and you're almost planning while the thing, while the pieces are in motion, so I definitely want to get this thing done sooner rather than later.
All right.
Uh, just for your information, I received an email this afternoon, and D C A is implementing the Restraire's Emergency Rental Assistance Program to help renters with their past due grants and utilities. Uh, I submitted the paperwork back to D C A if they needed, uh, so that they can submit checks to us for anyone that applies and is approved. If you know anyone that, that needs assistance, uh, they can either contact the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, or if you point them in my direction, I can put them in touch with someone so that they can, can go through that application process. The last thing I have is that Nancy Patton is taking over the, uh, Safety Committee, and they are applying for the safety grant. Uh, we previously talked about the safety grant and, and what we could possibly receive. Uh, it is based on the amount of workers comp premium that we pay. We are eligible for six thousand nine hundred dollars in grant funds, and we will be applying for the high-vis t-shirts for Public Works, the high-vis, high-vis jackets for Public Works Ambulatory Department, water field and barriers for the Fire Department, circulation fans for inventory, and the high-vis traffic pass vest for the Police Department. Uh, along with the, the safety grant, we have to submit an action plan, and the Police Department has the largest number of workers comp claims, and so we have to submit an action plan for them. Uh, that was submitted to me this afternoon. I have to review that, and Mayor and I need to sign off on that. I just need approval from you guys to submit the safety grant for those items that I listed along with the action plan, um, for the, the safety grant of six thousand nine hundred dollars.
So move.
Motion. Second. Motion by Councilman Hewitt, second by Councilman Dodd, any discussion or questions here, now, I'll call a question, all in favor. Motion by Attorney Madison, so approved. All right, any questions for Ms. Hall? Great.
Yes, ma'am. Has this anyone get his permits up to date on this project? Did he ask you? Ask you?
Depends on which project you're referring to.
He, he, the truck.
Well, on the project that he is actively working on, yes, if you refer to the senior center, no, no, any permits that he had expired quite some time ago. I had a correspondence with Mr. Ingram and told him that, uh, we are just before, uh, looking at that piece of property as live property, uh, that does require either me to bring to you and say this is live property, or, I guess, five citizens, but that's a bit, I mean, I, I know that.
You know, I want to get a truckload.
Right, as we have one right here that would be the very first one. Um, but I did have a discussion with him, um, and I have had a discussion with the building department regarding that piece of property and the construction there, and if he decided to start work, the first thing that would have to happen is inspections, and he posed that those structures have been in a state of construction for three or four years, um, the building department, or I believe that those would pass inspections, and what I said to Mr. Ingram was that he would, would more than likely have to do demolition and then start completely over. Um, I did tell him that, um, because of the look of, of the property that not only myself but you guys are getting beat up on a regular basis because of the look of the property, he did go out and cut the grass, um, and he did fix the fence, and I had a conversation with him and told him that he would have to maintain those, he would have to maintain the, um, fence barrier there, um, just so that the aesthetic of the property was not as bad as it was. He did apologize and say that he did not realize that he'd gotten to that state, um, but.
Most of them have dropped by, but.
But, so, all right, for that property, no, sir, I mean, every, everything that, that he had, he permits, anything that he had has expired, and if he decided tomorrow that he's ready to start, he would, the first thing he would have to do is, um, go back to the building department for inspection. But on the other projects, the, um, apartments, as far as I know, everything is up to date on that part.
Uh, one other thing is, I, I don't believe my police department has enforced the tenth law of State Jordan, after Carter, I don't know, it's like you can see into, you got tinted glass all the way around, which is against the law. And also the charges and the challenges are racing. I, I sit on my back porch and listen to every, just about every night, right, the law, I started.
The tinted glass, you mean, make sure it's tinted?
Yeah, I'm so lucky.
I mean, you can't, I think you can't get a small strip, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But, but, oh, what do you say, it's like all down?
Yeah. That's dangerous for the police office.
And neighbors for the drought.
Yeah, that's why I'm taking that for the drought. And the rest of us.
I was just a lot better. I don't get quite as few complaints. Our neighborhood man, uh, down four, he won, said they cleared that block down there, man.
Same.
But it's, I mean, he can hear it all, okay? He's down at, uh, the house.
Same thing, you call the police, uh, hold them, they're gone. Yeah, so, 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 you can, we can, we can say it, it's, it's a problem of the law, but we don't have the ability to, to govern. You know, we talked about, we talked about it, we talked about it before sitting right here.
Oh, and, uh, the Georgia State Patrol has something called lie-hopping, and all we have to do is contact the chair, the county chair, that's the one requesting.
To do what?
To say, "Oh."
I'm talking about.
We'd have to go fly in, and, and he would have to request.
Are you telling the guys with the charges, challenges, with the loud hype and stuff?
They, they, they just sit in this unit, that, that central office, and that's when they, you tell them what your problem is, and that's when they don't have to work.
But I, I would say, what if you want to correlate, or this gives, or I could correlate that chief.
Oh, yeah. I'm not, I, I, so, uh, okay, the point is, sure, just, just the fact that, I think the sheriff is the one that has to do the.
The chief is already aware, um, this is not just a problem that the city, like, apparently the, the majority of small cities have the charges, challengers that are, um, racing. Um, they, they really like the cities that have speed bumps, uh, because then they can go over the speed bumps.
And they're racing between, I, they're. And they're racing between high, uh, there, there.
There was an accident in Atlanta, guy, guy, he hit, he hit a tree going 117 miles per hour, it's better. In a charge, that's.
It was, somebody.
Lake town, maybe two, I have, I don't know, bring him, he didn't move, uh, sheriff, he didn't break down.
Shoot, charge.
Can you do that, can you do that?
That, so, I think they might have rushed it, like, all, all that, you know, how long, and all of where the bank goes.
But, 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 I mean, we talking about charges, challengers and this whole stuff, what, what, why are they breaking? They got a lot of car. Show, 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 show that to me in an ordinance, what, what, I mean, what that's.
You can't play your radio so that they heard, huh?
I think there's some applicable noise or, that you got.
So, so, so they're applicable, but we, we sit right here, we try to decipher, how, how do we judge those things? By ear? We, we, we don't have a body that's there for that.
Police have to do.
You have big property, you don't.
So, so, so again, we need to make sure our policies are straight before we start talking to those people.
The, the law, the, the right hand is the state law.
It's like, it's like the, uh, US Supreme Court said about obscenity, you know, they know it when they see it.
Well, I mean, if you're sitting.
You hear it, it's too loud.
If you're sitting in, in, in grits, in a parking lot, if you're ready to turn all the way up, so the people are so loud, they can't hear you.
How many of them?
I think it's.
They're out, I mean, definitely.
You can hear a hundred feet away. I think it falls under a general disturbing peace, because it's, it's obvious that it's disturbing peace. It may not be obvious, it's 120 decibels, maybe 90, but it's obvious that if you and I can't have a conversation, I agree it's subjective.
That's right.
I agree it's subjective.
Yeah.
But many of the laws that they enforce are subjective to some degree, somebody has to make that.
I trust I should want. If I'm ridiculous, I don't want.
Um, while we're talking about that real quick, let me think about the four-way stop, so we'll make any progress on that. Uh, because, because I believe Johnston Street may be one of the streets where they race. I hear them revving up, it's more than one inch of highway, I'm glad they're asleep, uh, pretty sure.
The concern with Johnston Street and, um, Steve and I have talked about this, is to how, how will we be able to put the signs that are required to say there is a four-way stop and then putting the signs out so that they can, can be visible. Uh, we just want to make sure that, you know, that we can, that we have sufficient room to put those signs and that those signs are visible to the traffic. Uh, Admistry is going to be easy, but Johnston's going to be a little.
We may have to get creative, but it's dangerous.
Yeah.
Yes.
Increase in business on that street, it's, um, it's just a matter of time.
Man, last, it was a blast, huh? The main supply was just jamming.
Yes, and most different. But, uh, crosswalks, um, on Adams, are we going to put crosswalks to correspond to stop, four-way stops? As I was asking how those would get.
Well, that would be one on that. I thought we were going to get one on that.
Oh, the DOT is kind of, well, yeah, this, you know, DOT does a project and then, you know, it's three years now before they actually do. So I think they actually have that, you know, 20, 20, 23. Do you just want 2023 or 2024?
Mm, we're talking about four-way stop down here, you know, and, um, River Falls and Mall, Magic, I love their traffic humps, not malls, but humps. I think it's traffic table, is it a table? Okay, the traffic tables almost made sense over here, not exactly sure how to, how to replace. Those traffic tables seem like it could be a possible solution, raise with them.
On Adams especially.
Adams especially.
Traffic going to the parking lot, Ford's.
There's one that, uh, that can.
And they, they look good, they, 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 they also have a big hump in the road.
Yeah, it's not.
And they provide, they also provide a off-way, I feel.
If you put your crosswalk in the top.
Absolutely.
So it's.
Goes up, it's black.
But you've got. You'll go airball, wouldn't. All right, anything, anything else from Ms. Hall? All right, city attorney report.
I've got a few things, uh, maybe a beat, some of them are there with me, but then, on, uh, I guess I think they advertise, I didn't know they advertised it before, it took a few minutes ago.
July 19th?
Right, uh, two areas, as we've got down, one for parking and three, a 438 Cadillac Ron, and one for, uh, mobile home, location on, uh, East Main Street, uh, area. And most we add is that, that, uh, some of the, that we have to at least 15 days before, as well as two days, two weeks before, uh, counseling, like, the coordinates, we have an office coming, the two, uh, planning and zoning representatives, uh, uh, amending the zoning code and, uh, what kind of damage is the, uh, definition of Texas laws and how Johnny Landowners are affected by that, so, we have to do that, all of those are coming up on, uh, July 19th, council. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have.
Any questions for the city attorney? I don't know, the mayor's report, uh, just have a couple of things to report. One, uh, a couple of months ago, it was mentioned that, uh, we had a vacancy coming up on the housing authority board and this Kathy Roland is rolling off in the name, and it's the mayor's prerogative to appoint a replacement. And this Yvonne Stroud volunteered, would like to serve on that board. And I've asked her to, that she is available, would like to serve, and they'll appoint her to the vacancy, uh, created by this Kathy Roland's term. The other thing, um, I'm honored, uh, served on the Bill of Georgia Community Action Agency Board, which is headquartered down in Warner Robins, and I've served several counties in Bill, Georgia, including the Hart, Georgia region, out of the east. And I've served a brief time as chairman, interim chairman, uh, a couple of years ago, about three years ago. And I'm honored that I was elected as the chairman this year, so I was certainly serving on that board. And that board, just, I'm saying that to promote what the board does a little bit. The board, uh, serves the senior centers in most of those counties, including the one here in the Rock County. Um, this person's money providing the heat and assistance to those in the winterization, uh, projects, particularly as they do, um, extour programs in any of the counties, not the one in Monroe, any of the counties, we serve extarring. A lot of good, uh, done.
You serve it, can you?
Them has, uh, a different group, it serves, uh, it serves all around here.
But this, this is supported by.
It's a different, different, uh, community action agency there, several others, they have, different, ones have different territories, but ours is one of them. Ours is Bill, Georgia and Hart, Georgia, and really, combined group, Hart, Georgia has its own board, Bill, Georgia serves it, the district agency, so. Territory actually goes, they have to level, outburden, all of that, terrific, problems, it's a pretty, pretty problematic issue. And we're fortunate that we've got three members from here in, uh, the Rock County, Roger Stewart's own board and, uh, Mr. Chad. They've been all, for a few years now, so we've got a good, good group. Anyway, I'm just honored to be able to serve on that board and represent the city in society, and so do. Uh, chairman, Taffler is here, do you have any more to say?
No, I'm good.
Okay, any questions for the chairman? If not, that, uh, concludes by remarks, and now we leave the council board reports, any reports from the boards? City, any other?
Oh, we got, uh, we, 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 okay, uh, we just, uh, thank you all for approving the appointment and, uh, we got proof for the, uh, for our brand. Thirty-six thousand, we're on that, uh, I'll thank Mr. Daniel as well for sending that information on, uh, I'm back there on this. I'm sorry, I can't understand what you're saying. I'm sorry, I, I'm just saying, thank you for sending me that information about brands. I know that's intended for, uh, and, uh, you know, I think, you said, you, you're okay.
And what more?
Okay.
Or an acting board?
We're playing the mayor's, making board to the House authority, my, and, and, of course, we saw some, like, forums, like, problems, and we've been having to fight. Uh, we're working on life, trying our best here, keep our, uh, code of conduct up, you did. You've got a lot to do.
Certainly does. All right, Mr. Carr, you got it.
Oh, I was. The, there's a term, there's a Friday, God forbid. Board doesn't have anything to do with it. Well, they did, I quit that after the board, but it's, or, this call, people, I moved forward, played with, uh, uh, there was, there was one name, uh, that, uh, that, it, I don't, it's not, I'd be the part of, I haven't, was it? City manager, the fourth, in large for that, uh, right away, what's the status? Well, actually, you, you're the one, the easy, on, on.
Old sixteen.
Sixteen, green, sixteen. Where that property, where the, where the, sold that property.
Steve Collins is going to redo the, redo all that.
All right, his, his, um, yeah, we got his name, um, first of all, yeah. You, you, uh, you mind your own thing?
Yeah. Gilbert.
Gilbert, Matt Gilbert, Matt Gilbert, is the owner of.
I had an assist from the back.
Okay, we got to, uh, we got to get that thing sorted, but get it, get it off the sixteen, the, the sixteen green. So we need, I mean, and we need to talk to him, we need to make sure he's still, you know, it's, we've been kicking it down the road. And he's a landowner and he's got, and he's now that's 50 feet from the ground, but he serves the sixteen green.
I thought, I thought everything was pretty much done, except we're waiting for surveys, it would be.
Well, it's purple, it's unproved, but, yeah, but it's a legal issue, he's got legal property now that, that is invasive on that.
Yeah, once I get the survey, I can go, please, we're transferring them on.
And he, are you sure he's still amiable?
What was the last time I talked to him?
What?
We're all around the survey, I know Steve's on vacation this week.
I, I don't know where he is.
I thought, maybe you already stated, maybe you said, put him, play, I can get around.
I don't know where he is, but I, I don't know steps.
But you talked to Matt Gilbert.
Not recently, it's been a couple of months, I've talked to him, he's long.
Yeah, give him a call, make sure he's still, because that's, that's critical, if he, uh, he were to say, heck, we.
Well, we don't have a reason, huh, we don't have a reason to believe he has changed his mind.
No, but you, time, you know, you just, with the development, we don't, you know, we don't sit around, we don't.
Time changes.
Yeah, and that's critical for which one.
Well, he was aware that it was going to take some time for the electric department to do what they needed to do and then to remove it, and they just finished.
And they did a great job, that's, that's, there can be commended by.
Have you all, compliments, your board talked anything about the replacement of the cart path with?
Oh, we're, 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 you think, did we ask?
Yeah.
No?
When I was out there in the last couple of weeks, Dean or somebody mentioned to me and asked, is that something the city was going to replace or hire somebody to replace, and if so, they wanted to contact them prior, because there were some other cart paths they wanted to replace and extend. And if we already had somebody coming, they wanted to work with the same people to do it. If not, they were going to go and hire somebody to do the stuff that they need done.
All it is is a sidewalk. Yeah, and that's why people do that.
Well, and that's what I seen, mentioned.
Yeah, well, I, 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 I believe, I believe that, I think city needs to get a, uh, here, uh, that, that's, that's.
But in replacing what we tore up?
Oh, well, maybe that, just that small there.
Well, that, that's what they wanted to know, is are we going to do it in-house? If so, that's fine, but if we were going to hire somebody, they wanted to know who we were going to hire so they could contract with them to do so.
We're going to use our guy, the city board.
I didn't know, we already did that, okay, thank you, sir, I'm sorry.
All right. So then the city, does the trash still work for?
Trash does, but I, I, I'm pretty sure that mine and Reese have had a discussion about, because you're talking about where the electric has had to.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Very well, all right.
I, I, on, on that side, look, can we contract with government? Can we contract crowds out and do that work with the government?
It's our property, city's property. These are city employees, okay, is there a problem?
I think.
They could, we could charge them.
Yeah, I mean.
But I think you could legally work on that property, he's not working on private property.
But he's talking, they're talking about more.
I, I, I think, I think that you are talking about two different things, because I think you're talking about that we need to fix the sidewalk that we tore up when we did the electric line. Are you talking about additional cart paths?
Yeah, there are additional work, they want to place somebody to do.
Oh.
They play the city.
Here, here would be my concern for that, but that's the administration, y'all.
That would be my concern.
My concern would be, that's not my, my concern, if we got a much sidewalk to replace already, I could handle, that's why I have proven it.
I get that.
So I would hate to pull him off for a few weeks to do some. All right, uh, any other accounts that you, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, were you finished? No, I'm comfortable.
Yeah.
Let's try.
Couple of things I have, uh, I'm glad you said that we do have a sidewalk to replace because it kind of goes into the T-slope. Uh, are we looking at sidewalk to, on Johnston, down to Country Grove, and, or no, or there's some kind of T-slope? That, that's, it's neat, I'm, I'm telling you, there are so many accidents, I mean, I don't see the form, we used to, like, as he was walking or jogging or whatever he was doing. And that is, it, it, there are so many weird accidents over on Johnston, and, and people just try, genuinely trying to walk, jog or just go to the store. And that is, I mean, without a sidewalk, that is a, that is a super, super dangerous area. Uh, and, and, and the law knows, obviously, we can just sidewalk everything, but that place right there, it presents a safety issue. So if we're looking at T-slopes, and we can add that to T-slopes, that would be phenomenal to do. Second thing about T-slopes, people aren't going to vote for T-slopes if we're not going to educate them on the importance of T-slopes. So I think it's incumbent, and we are the ones who need to promote, like, if you, if you support it, if you don't support it, that's great. But if we, if we, if we, the people up here, support T-slopes, I mean, this kid right here, if he got a ride on the school bus on a, on daylight today or down a dirt road, and those buses got to go to pick him up, that's bad. Or we got, or we have our police cars that have to go make a call to, you know, Stroud Street and it's an unpaid road, that's, that's a bad, bad office for, for them. So it's up to us to educate why people should have voted for it. Uh, and I think we failed to do that, I think both City and County, we both have failed to do that. But I think once we do it, we write the, we write the narrative on that. Uh, but if that's our one going down to, uh, at least the country. Uh, but if that sidewalk going down to, uh, at, at least the Country Club, I love it, it goes forty-one, but if not the, the Country Club, that would take, that would be a heck of a, hell. Uh, next thing, um, the status of the house that's on Stroud Street that was burned down, we, that grass is by ways high. Uh, the neighbor stays over there, I, I just know that as, I don't really know her first name or last name, you know Beth's last name, Joe? Uh, wait, whatever her last name is, she, she stays right next door, and the horror stories that she gives about snakes that come out of there, I mean, it, it's right by Creek, and it's overgrown, that, that, that has to pose a, the public safety risk, has to be a repercussion when it would cause, that property has to go, I don't know if it, if, if it been, if it's been sold. I mean, she's been talking, she said, I bought a property myself, I just, it, it, that stuff needs to be cut down, whatever the case may be. And me and Super, Super, Super County was going to try to go over there one day, and, uh, I said, I was going to cut the grass, but soon as you go over there, there's so, so much debris in the yard.
Don't say somebody, don't do that, you have somebody that already walked through there.
It's, it's warm.
I think that's the same one, I even have a, in this.
And, how many letters is, or citations is, I don't know, one issue that property on, numbers, but I like.
They already.
All the citations have been continued, and, and now the, it's, the, the owner is, is no longer worthy back.
So, so what's next for that? Let's go, what's, what's the next name?
Just clean up the lawn.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with all of that, we just don't want to do that. I mean, we got children, because that was a pretty older neighborhood, now you have younger children that are moving in, you know, and, and they're planning that here. To me, if I'm a squatter, that house, that house is a perfect location for me to squat, and it ain't the safest thing. So, if, 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 if we're going to lean into that looking for, uh, I definitely love that, other than that, uh, and then, in addition, that I don't want, uh, middle circle, I think it is. I mean, I have this in every decade, and, and, and we know that squatters have been, you know. Oh, it is, it is.
Been one.
Yeah, and, and, and so, so when are we going to get bored over about this thing, and that's, that's, what we got to do is clean it up, because it's not fair for me to have to drive by there, it's not fair for this vet after city, I mean, have to, have to live next door to it, have a, want a cup of coffee and look at the mess next door to it.
Boy, boy, man, we don't.
Absolutely, you may, you know how it was, I mean, you had snakes in, and Travis would come to the house across the street.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Who, who owns it?
Couldn't tell him, talking about on Stroud Street.
Yeah.
Don't, I don't know. About, about two people, at, at it burned down, yeah, he was, he, he put up a tent in the backyard, he was standing in the tent, and sometimes he would go inside, and, and I haven't seen the gentleman over here.
I just think that can do, take property over, I mean.
Yeah.
Better than tax assessment, but, yeah, lean on it, or.
What, what, what we have to bother, what we do?
Lighten the property, we can break a case, and, uh, go to the city court, get it there, tear it down, sell, and recover our cause. I can say that all that work it going to take to do that process, but we got that, uh, you remember to do that.
Yeah, what, what?
We, we're talking about this house particularly, that are like thousands, and we were, we were talking about more than that process, and I think we all should.
Yeah, that's.
What about, can't we just go cut the grass, and put a lien, cut the grass, and pile the debris up? Can't we, uh, you know, some of this, it's unfair, we're going to have to waste, waste the whole summer while we're pushing.
That'd be, that'd be.
So, it's bad if you never have.
If you drop the roll back dumpster on that property, I would have no problem volunteering to help clean that area below. I mean, I'm pretty sure several of us would do it, just because we want to clean neighborhood, just like anybody else, when you put a roll back dumpster, because that yard is full of brake pads and, and bricks and.
Yeah, somebody's been, I think, during the long, possibly, you know, walking through there, it's like he, if you want to work on a car, whatever you took off of.
Just leave it on the door.
If he, if he did it in front yard, that's very well, if he did it in the side yard, that's very well.
Yes, my question is.
I can answer your question. Uh, I'd be concerned about trespasses, you go on somebody's property. The whole neighborhood might be ready to go figure it out, they might all, all be trespassers until we have some light to be on that property. That's my issue. The guy says, come, come clean it up, can you get a group, you gotta go clean it up.
Well, we can.
But if you can't imagine, uh, I think.
Then what do you do?
I think it's time to.
Know something, say, uh.
Can we do something enough, don't you?
Well, yeah, but you're keeping, then we still have to try to know if that's for the.
Yeah. So, is there, is there, uh, is there a situation where it could become such a public nuisance, or health hazard, that you could intervene quickly?
Quicker.
If it already was.
It's an imminent danger.
An imminent would be like?
That it's about to explode or something like that.
Well, you know.
I'm not trying to be an example, but I know it's a hazard.
And I, and I appreciate.
Well, that's true, there's lots of them around town, like that.
Yeah.
Because I have this conversation a lot with people in the public who don't understand.
Yeah.
The process, how the process we have to go through, and you can't just disenfranchise somebody in their property, you got to go through this. Nor would you want somebody to think that your property look bad, or you just will tell you no, that's subjective, but.
And what, uh, the, the first thing you try to do, and I think that's one thing that, uh, my lawyers do, is try and make people do their own, do what they should do, repair the property. Some of that work, some of it I don't think is, the city board, you can't turn the gas, and they.
I think probably one of the good idea would be to take his top ten or so of offenders, and let's just go after those properties and realize that they cost the city some money, but we're going to clean the properties up.
There wasn't a cover.
At some point.
There was a time, uh, that we did, probably about a half dozen of that, I'm not sure if that got on the board, complaint law or something.
I think, I think we wouldn't have any trouble coming up with that.
There, there was, some of those houses, uh, I nailed a notice on the door of one of those houses, uh, canvas, uh, that has no longer there now. I stepped through the front porch, coming up there, nailed a notice on the door, I'm afraid to get out of there, but I'd hurt myself. That, that house was gone, and, and we had some other success, and it was time to get back and, uh, maybe, it is time to get back into the business and take them some credit.
Helps the whole community.
Yeah, and Mr. Mary, what I recommend is, in addition to that, I would love to sit down and, and, and let's put together, like we said, the list, and, and that, and that's what, what you're saying, I mean, we, we've talked about, I mean, I heard Mr. Daniel say, saying something about, we, 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 we've talked about this for a long time, and it's not just the house on Stroud Street that's bad, it's several places around the city that, that.
There's one in April.
Yeah, I mean, and, and we just have to do the right thing, because that's what we said we would do, that we just got to get that done.
My opinion is, my opinion is, we don't need, we don't need to sit down, we, we just need to get Malone to do that list that city has, and get started.
Absolutely, totally agree.
Another meeting about it, we, we, we agreed to it.
We just need to go to Saturday.
We talked about it in January two years ago, I mean, we can take the match.
That's what I heard.
And, and nothing else to be about.
He is taking action, I mean, his defense, I mean.
I'm not saying that he is, I'm.
I, 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 um, he has, also has another job that he has to do, so, combined with this zone, kind of, I've covered it.
Oh, but at some point, yeah, I suppose, if it's, we have to decide, we'll escalate, there's, there's some cost to the city.
At some point, and even then, come out.
And when we escalate, there's some cost to the city, so it's not really a power to.
All these, the powers do is write up.
That point is, that, that point, that point is way back now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all, all right, councilor.
I don't want to be here to talk, talking about.
All right, and this council, one, four, any additional? Any additional business? All right, here none, any public comments? Anyone in the public, if you can come forward, may do so for, for minutes, on any subject, please state your name and address for the record. For your subject.
Mr. Paul, where you got to give your, your statement.
This set four-minute speech. All right, any, any public comments? Detecting a lack of interest, we will move on, we do have a need for an executive session to discuss pending litigation. Is there motion to go up to executive session?
So.
Motion by Councilman Stroud, same by Councilman Hewitt, discussion on the motion, here, now, I call the question, all in favor? Motion carries the evidence, and we are moving into executive session.